I would like to call to order the Tuesday, June 1st, 2021 Board of Selectmen's Meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I do not have any announcements this evening. I don't know if anybody else on the board has anything they'd like to discuss or recognize not on our agenda.
I will just comment that I was at the awards meeting at the high school just moments ago. Very pleased to see the speaker in front of me was Selectman Bonin's daughter, who was class president for the class of 2021. So congratulations, I think, are in order.
To all the students of 2021, this is a really good class, so thank you, David.
You're welcome.
All right. Is there anything else? Seeing as none. So brings us to Agenda Item.
From the tree.
It does not. Agenda item number one, which is the approved license change of manager for the Whitensville Fishing Game and possible votes. I have to turn the meeting over to my vice chairman because I am a member of the Whitensville Fishing Game and therefore have to refuse myself from this portion of the meeting.
Do we have anybody from Whitensville Fishing?
We do.
Come on up, Philly.
And let me know when it's safe to come back.
Good evening.
Hi.
Evening.
I'm Paul Booty, Chairman of the Board of Directors at Whitensville Fishing Game. Been a chairman for this year, well, a year and a half now with COVID because we had to pass our elections over. And as such, we're trying to get back up to speed and we, you know, doing some remodeling in the club and, you know, our existing bar manager has resigned. She wants to spend more time with her family. Edie.
Caldwell.
Caldwell, I'm sorry. I'm mental blocked. Edie wants to spend more time with her grandchildren. Cindy McDowell here has bar experience, a tremendous amount with the club, and she has stepped up and offered to take the position as bar manager with the full appreciation and acceptance from the board and the club. We have 100% faith in Cindy as, as a matter of fact, she was a candidate back with Edie. Edie and her were both worked at the bar and, you know, Edie became chairman at that time. Cindy has every bit of the knowledge. She's got the start class pass and everything that's required. So we've got to turn it over to Cindy if you've got questions.
You're welcome.
Put a face to the name.
I see Suzanne and Lisa's checklist here and it appears they have everything checked off. I don't see that there are any documents missing, so absent any more discussion, I entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sorry we're so tough on you.
I'm getting worse here with the cam cam.
When you go out there, can you tell Kevin to come back in about 15 minutes?
I was going to say a half hour. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
They said they could be going in a half hour.
He may resume his throne.
Oh, thank you.
Alight, I think is the word.
Alight.
Well, light is leaving. Yeah, huh? There's got to be something.
We can look that up. A light is landing on something, isn't it?
Well, you just keep going with your meeting.
Yeah, I was just going to say, leave it to Dave to try and find a new and creative way to kick me out of here. Agenda item number two is the Council on Aging, approved spending from donation account for construction and possible votes. So she wants to use for the Adult Social Center, they're a recipient of monetary donations throughout the year. Current donation is limited to entertainment, equipment, and other supplies used for programs. She wants the Board of Selectmen to authorize the funds to include construction, repairs, and other improvements and required maintenance of said improvements at the center. And one is the senior center flooring replacement at $57,125. Council on Aging AC New Floor Donations, $825. And the Council on Aging Gift Account, if allowed by the Board of Selectmen to balance the project.
That sounds like an email from me, Mr. Chair.
Yes, it is.
I was going to note for the folks at home that in the past two minutes, every member of the board and the town administrator has been looking over Gene as if for approval.
I was waiting.
Including me.
The departments are allowed to receive a donation, but it's up to the board to set the parameters in how the donation is spent. We're looking to broaden the language because they started the project and they have found some unexpected issues. So we are looking to use the donation account to help pay for that project. So we're looking for this language to broaden it so that we can use the donation account for that purpose.
Okay. Would it bring the donation account down too? Would it put it at a zero balance by using it or?
No.
Okay.
Do you have preferred wording or can we just pass a general motion?
I think she broadened the language enough where it'd allow me to spend the funds out of there. So it's going to include the construction, repairs, and maintenance in addition to the
Typically, the use of those monies is defined by the Council of Aging volunteers, right? So we're basically just giving them additional opportunities to spend those monies.
I'm sorry. You're very soft spoken, Tim.
I'm very soft spoken. So basically, we're broadening the opportunity for the COA volunteers to spend some of the money that they've raised over the years.
Not the COA volunteers. This is money given directly to the Council on Aging or the Senior Center. It's not the.
Sun Chung Club? Okay, got us confused. Okay.
Would this be just a one-time thing or moving forward?
This will broaden the language to be used for any purpose identified.
Moving forward from this point.
Moving forward, yes.
So to prevent further motions if a similar situation came up.
Her requested language is the second paragraph of what I.
Oh, see, you stole it. How was this going to read it?
Oh, go ahead.
We'll read it.
I move that we authorize the use of funds to include construction, repairs, other improvements, and required maintenance at the Senior Center.
Second.
Okay. The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to point out that's the second paragraph of Patrice's.
Oh, is that the same one Matt was just going to read?
Yeah.
That is fantastic, Dave. That's some serious sleuthing on your part.
I was able to stop him in time.
All right. Seeing as there's no additional discussion past that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next is to reopen town buildings and possible votes. So, and I believe we discussed this in our previous meeting.
You did, and since then, the governor has removed all mask restrictions. So we have, this morning, reopened Town Hall to the public. There's been a clamor for it to be open, and the decision was reached by the fire chief to also reopen. That was the one place that we had some questions about the staff there being exposed anymore, but they've all been vaccinated, so it's his view that he should be open. The only thing that will remain closed is the Adult Social Center until the project is completed. There are still.
That's unrelated to COVID.
No, that.
It's just the construction.
So, you know, the closure for the pandemic was the opportunity to do the work, but then we couldn't get the people to come in and do the work because of the pandemic. So now here we are. We actually did get subflooring, though, so at an affordable price, that was not easy to do.
If somebody hasn't been vaccinated and they come in, are they advised to wear a mask?
That's all we're going to do. You know, when a citizen who pays taxes comes in and says, I want to be here, we respectfully ask them to wear a mask if they're not vaccinated. The one thing we'll try to maintain is social distancing. We keep the tables far apart from each other.
Somebody asks somebody coming in, though, if they've been vaccinated or just on the honor system that.
It's on the honor system. To be truthful, we did so much canvassing of our senior population, we know who got the vaccine because we set up poll appointments for that, so.
I'm talking about non-senior coming in.
Well, I just, there'd be a sign at the door that says strongly encouraged. It's a vulnerable population, but.
So we're still, I think it was our plan that we'll lift our state of emergency when the Commonwealth moves their state of emergency. So this is just to open up town buildings with the exception of the Senior Center.
Yep.
Which will reopen once construction's finished.
The second part of that was the remote meetings. We had discussed that at the same time.
I think he extended it, the governor. I thought to make sure.
I think you have two discrete questions. One is, do you want to continue to entertain participants in meetings who are not member of the body? So to allow engineers and attorneys, for instance, who are going for the planning board, to go about their business until their docket item comes up, which I make an attend without having to physically be here. That's a different question from should boards continue to have meetings with people who are voting members, not present, but online, voting online? So those are the questions in front of you. It would help just to clean things up, though, if all this can be voted on through just informal resolutions, so the buildings and the different town meeting issues.
I think board members should be in person, but I think that the ability to have testimony from a remote party is still valuable.
No, absolutely. It is, to Matt's point about the reduced cost for the, for legal counsel or whatever, you don't have the travel time that would be added to it. You're still going to have the standby time, but it would reduce that from the ZBA standpoint. Legal counsel's worked out fine.
So under the Open Meetings Act, you can do that already, but, you know, if you don't give people a link to sign onto, they're really, it's a, the old-fashioned squawk box. I think if you do a policy tonight, you would want to set up either Zoom or Spaces as the way that we do this and allow it as a matter of posting.
How would you limit the applicants from using that, that process? Because the problem we have is like on the zoning board, trying to review documents. We're just not at that point yet. We can see everything that's being presented. So is it fair to limit it to just?
About leaving it to the committees to decide what they want to do. And they're better situated than we are here to tell the planning board that somebody should be remote or not remote.
Yep.
It depends on the issue, so.
So you'd want to have it so that remote participation is allowed for non-board members at the discretion of that board?
Of that board, yeah.
That makes sense.
Also moved.
What do you think, Dave?
I'll second.
So we're taking care of the remote meetings part.
Yeah.
So the motion regarding remote meeting participation has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on that aspect?
And just for clarity, that will be up to the chairman of whatever board, correct?
Yes. Would you agree with that?
Yes.
Any other further discussion on that?
I would just say that at some point, we have to kiss this goodbye, okay? I don't know when that point is, but for now.
Why do you look directly at me whenever this happens?
I haven't said the name of the company.
He anticipated it, though. He turned a nice crimson color.
I do, yeah.
He turned a viar red.
You know, I understand we're kind of a transition period, and I think that's fair, and I think that's logical, and I think there's a lot of, not a lot, but there is at least some use for remote meeting now, but I think it's something that we have to recognize. This can't go on forever.
Now, are you talking about board members or people or consultants?
I would say both.
Okay. I think it's advantageous to maintain if you've got consultants in Illinois or something and it's vital to a project, why not let him, if the chairman so wants it, let him present his, whatever he's doing remotely.
I think it's not too much, it's giving him an option. It's not saying every meeting will have remote participation, but if it's required, it's there and it's a tool in their belt that they can use.
Right. If it becomes a problem moving forward, the chairman can just opt out of it.
It's not a permanent motion, and I second it, so.
Is there any other further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
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 And then we have the issue of the board members. We don't, we apparently don't want them participating remotely.
Well, yeah, that, he clarified that.
Yeah, we don't want.
Board members.
The board members should be present.
We okay on that with? All right.
So now the opening of buildings, with the exception of the Senior Center, which will be opened, actually, it's the Adult Day Center now, I believe.
Adult Social Center.
Adult Social Center. Which will be.
Opposed to daycare center.
I didn't say daycare, I just said day. Because you're not really there at night. That will be opened once construction's been completed. Okay. So just for clarity for the notes, we're making a motion to open all town buildings to the public effective immediately?
With the exception.
With the exception of the Adult Social Center.
Are we going to have to have it come before this board to reopen the Social Center when the construction's done, you think? Is that encompassed in this motion?
I believe it's encompassed because I said, once construction is completed.
Yeah.
Does that cover us?
Yeah.
Any further discussion on that motion as it was made and seconded?
Long time coming.
Exactly. It'd be nice to get back to the old normal. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think that covers everything that we wanted to do on that one. So now it's discuss and vote on the selection of property liability insurance for the Town of Douglas and possible votes. And this is the packets that Matt was gracious enough to give us for homework. I believe we have representation here, too?
You do. If you, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
Introduce the topic. First of all, whenever you descend from a height and settle upon a spot below, you are alighting. So if you are a person stepping off a bus, you are alight to the ground. If you're a bird in the air and you land on your perch, you are alighting.
What if I trip down the stairs?
They're falling.
Falling.
And if he was to be pushed?
Yeah, well.
We look at whose line.
It was just about three years ago when members of the Board of Selectmen at the time and the town's administration presented the voters of the town with the necessity of a property, a proposition two and a half override in order to raise property taxes beyond the cap to sustain the ongoing operational service levels of the Town of Douglas. And at the time, written recognition that that was a significant request of the people, we made a number of promises to people. One of the most important was that we would review every single account of the town, that we would find opportunities, not just for cost savings, but also value enhancements, that we would make sure that all of our vendor relationships were geared towards maximizing the return to the taxpayer. And we've done that. I think we've, we've shaken the tree so many times, you know, there's times when I think the leaves are all going to fall off, but we've reviewed everything from office supplies to various maintenance contracts, the way that we purchase health insurance, our staffing. And so, you know, in some places, we've increased spending on staffing because additional staffing is increasing the ability of the office in question to take in revenues. But all of this has been done with the singular purpose to be able to sustain the town's finances for as long as possible without having to ever again use free cash for operating expenditures. This is one of the most difficult accounts for anyone, any layperson, to really deal with because there's not, this is our entire general liability coverage from property and casualty, workers' compensation, umbrella, professional liability lines, and our special injured on duty coverage for public safety staff that are covered by state statute. And we typically spend, it's changed a great deal in the last 10 years. It started off right around a quarter million dollars, and the latest figure for renewal is in your packets tonight, over $400,000. The account has grown significantly because of the Town's Claims Activity and the property claims in specific at the school department and some smaller claims here on the town side, which have fueled a rate increase, a necessary rate increase. So in addition to the original promise made to the taxpayer, it was also time to just look over our premium history and see if there's anything that can be done to address the cost. And at the same time, the world we live in is becoming increasingly complicated and dangerous, specifically around cybersecurity. And so it was also time to look at the quality of the coverage that we have, make sure that the town is being protected. It does us no good to have a continuity of operations plan that relies upon the cloud and our connectivity to the internet and at the same time be overly exposed in terms of cybersecurity threats. So it was incumbent upon us to shop out this business. This year was the year to do it, and we approached Gallagher, which is an insurance brokerage of significant travel because they are a large national presence, and they're able to shop this line of business to many different carriers across the country. And we also asked Maya, our existing coverage, to propose a renewal. The renewal came in yesterday, and Gallagher's been working for months to attract different players. So what I'd like to suggest, Mr. Chairman, is that Gallagher present first and that Maya, our longstanding partner, be allowed to strike the last word, and that both parties would answer questions of the Board of Selectmen, and then you can make your own procedural decision from that point whether you want to resolve this issue tonight or hold on to the matter until the 15th. But maybe what you should do is, is hear the presentations first and see if there's, how many unanswered questions you have or don't have. I think this is a fascinating conversation. This is a window into what town administrators and managers are supposed to do all the time. And so even though insurance is exempt from Chapter 30B procurement laws, this is the process we use to buy just about anything and everything. We try to make sure that we know all the details and have more than one source of supply, if you will, to compare. With that, that's my introduction, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, I like Matt's proposal. We can start with Gallagher and get them going on their presentation, and if questions come up, we'll go through them. Sound good to you guys?
Yep.
Excellent.
All right. Come on up.
If you need chairs.
We'll have to bring them.
Take your own chair, BYOC.
Do you have the?
I gave you some homework already, but we've got some more packets to dish out. I think it's a little more concise for you. As a quick matter of introduction, my name's Saleem Bartok. We were, we were introduced here by, by Chris Nunley, who's, who is with Gallagher Benefit Services there, our sister company, and he operates your, your health and benefits.
And insurance is such exciting stuff.
I know, especially on a, on a Tuesday night after a long weekend, that's what you want to be talking about. Go ahead, Matt.
My name's Matt Mancini. I've been with Gallagher for four years now. I work out of our Boston office and I assist Ed and Saleem on our public entity team.
I'm Ed Lehan. My title is area president. I'm part of our regional leadership team and the public entity team that these guys are part of reports to me. So I'm here because ultimately the promises we make to you, I'm responsible for making sure that they happen. And I'm also the son of a former town manager, city manager, finance director as well. So I've, I've heard your lives for most of my life from my dad. So it's, it's fun to, to be here and thank you for inviting us. Just a quick, couple of statements about, about our, our team. Not really a shameless commercial, I'll just give you a little background with our depth in the public entity arena. Our team in the Northeast handles 70-plus public entities, so we're pretty deep into your, your business. And we have a national practice that supports us, and some of that comes with carrier relationships as well as other resources. And we have, we literally have thousands of public entities that we insure across the country. I think, I'm not sure exactly how they count it, but I believe we're the largest broker in the U.S. for public entities. So that shouldn't scare you because of large S. You are exactly the kind of client that we feel benefits the most from our services. So thank you.
Thanks, Ed. I'm going to actually steal a line. I've heard Ed say a bunch, but we really do feel like we strike a nice mix between Wall Street and mainstream, that in the sense that, you know, we're obviously a large broker and, and we're nationwide, thousands of clients, but we still operate very much in a sort of small company feel, right? And we like to, to convey that and make sure that our clients feel that as well, so. I know, I think Matt in his email mentioned that he wanted to keep this to five or 10 minutes each, so we'll try to do that with this deck here. So this deck that we just handed out has most of the information that was in the packet that Matt sent around this afternoon, so it'll be easier to, to work through. But if at any point you have any questions that you just think of, please feel free to stop me and I'll, you know, we can, we can address those before moving on. Otherwise, we can address them at the end or, you know, after Maya goes as well, so. With that, seventh things we'll run through today. One, the list of carriers we approached on behalf of the town and the Board of Ed. Two and three are the expiring and the proposed program structures that we are laying out. The fourth is your historical pricing with Maya over the past 10 or so years. Fifth is our marketing summary with our recommended option. The sixth are some, some key coverage enhancements that you'll get with, with our proposed program. And the seventh is just a kind of a listing of our public entity team so you can put some more faces to name. So with that, I'll just bring you to the, that third page here, the list of carriers we approached. So when we first linked up with Matt and Suzanne and Gene, thank you, we, you know, we kind of told them that our goal was to, to go out to the marketplace and go to as many carriers as possible, right? That was, you know, A, to make sure that we're going out and securing the best deal for the town, right? You know, but also as a, as a broker, this is our job, right? So with our current clients, we do that on a, on a three to four-year cycle. And again, that's to ensure that you're getting the best coverage terms and the best pricing the marketplace as a whole has to offer, right? And so by, by putting this out to bid and getting all these carriers to compete on your, on your insurance program, that, that ensures that, you know, that you're getting the best deal. So as you can see, I won't go through each one of these carriers, but we went to about 10 property carriers, four liability carriers for the town, about five for the Board of Ed, a whole bunch of cyber carriers, three carriers for workers' compensation, and then about seven carriers for the, the police fire and accident, which is currently placed with Chubb through my, or Cabot. So these next two slides, pages, pages four and five, really the way, the reason we put these together is just because we feel like putting these in a, in a sort of visual setting makes them easier to understand, so you know exactly what you're looking at and what, what type of coverage you're purchasing. So what I'll do is I'll just briefly go through this first one, and they're, they're fairly similar, so I won't go through both of them, just in the interest of time, but I'll, I'll go through the first one and stop me if you have any questions. Matt mentioned just before we, we started that this really is all encompassing, right? It touches upon all aspects of your insurance program, so that's what you'll see here. So that, that first column, that's your property insurance, right? Your property insurance currently has a $2,500 deductible. And these next five columns are all of your liability lines of coverage, right? So you've got general liability, auto liability and auto physical damage, law enforcement liability. liability, public officials liability, and employment practices liability for the town. And then educators legal liability and employment practices liability for the Board of Ed. So all those lines of coverage, currently you have a million dollar per occurrence primary layer there, you'll see, and then a $4 million per occurrence excess layer above that. So in essence, you're looking at $5 million worth of per occurrence coverage for those lines, right? And then you'll see the deductibles listed for each line of coverage there in white. The next tower there is your workers' comp, again with my statutory limits and a million dollar limit for employer's liability. And then that last, that black tower there is your police and fire accident policy with Chubb. Again, no deductible and statutory limit, so. The one policy that isn't listed in the structure is, or actually there's a couple, but the cyber, you're currently getting a million dollars of coverage and crime, you're getting $200,000 worth of coverage right now.
Employee crime, correct?
Yes, correct, yeah. Ploy dishonesty, yep. Any questions on that so far?
Now rather than later. On the educators legal liability.
Yep.
What is the relationship of that coverage line to this umbrella?
The umbrella sits excess of that. So the umbrella sits excess, all of the coverage is below it.
Right, so the aggregate for educators, then you could say it's 7 million? Am I doing that right?
Yes.
That their aggregate.
Perfect, yep, exactly. So the per occurrence and the aggregate for each is listed on each tower. So you look at general liability, same sort of thing. Primary layer is a million dollar per occurrence and $3 million aggregate. So you put them both together, you're getting $5 million of per occurrence coverage and $7 million of aggregate coverage, exactly.
And that's shared with the town. So how would this work? The town's aggregate for our public official, oh, it's the same. My vision is horrible. Is that one and three?
That's one and three, yep.
Yes.
All right, so the seven would be total, total, aggregate, right?
Mm-hmm.
So if they had a $5 million boo-boo and we had a $3 million boo-boo, we'd be stuck at seven, right?
Correct.
Because we're together.
Yes, exactly, yep.
One more question and it might be premature.
Sure.
Not to your proposed program yet. I think everybody is aware of the attacks and the pushback on qualified immunity for police. How do you think that's going to affect the cost of our coverage? It's buried somewhere in the legislature like right now, but I don't know where, but it will probably resurface at some point and may well become a reality.
Right.
If there's a severe limitation or let's say for purposes of discussion, a loss of qualified immunity for law enforcement liability, where does that leave us? What changes would we have to make?
Well, I mean, I certainly, that's something we're discussing with a lot of our municipal clients and a lot of similar questions right now. I do think it's something that we need to keep tabs on. How will it impact your pricing?
Right.
It's really.
And I'm not looking for.
No, I know, I know.
For some kind of general.
Sure, yeah. I mean, it's tough to say. It certainly isn't going to, you know, make it easier, right, to place coverage or make it cheaper by any means. But that's why we go through the process of, on a three- to four-year cycle, we go out and kind of scour the marketplace for different options. So I think it's something that every municipality and every broker firm is going to be dealing with over the next, you know, however many years. But in essence, I can't give you a specific answer because it's something that I think is being dealt with, you know, right now on a sort of ongoing basis and.
It's a hypothetical.
Something we're keeping tabs on, yeah, yeah. But yeah, of course, as far as pricing goes, premium costs, you know, it's going to make it tougher, sure. Yeah, absolutely. But, you know, we've dealt like, we've dealt with things like that in the past. Cyber's coverage is something that, you know, eight years ago, it was, you know, it was the cheapest thing around and nobody wanted to buy it. Now it's become more and more expensive and it's sort of a necessity, so, yeah. Do you have anything to add?
No, I don't.
I have.
I have a question. When you have.
Go ahead.
When you have bids, let's say travelers, they're in.
Yeah.
Four different categories.
Yep.
So when their property, do they give you one bid if they're just doing the property and do they have another bid if they're including the other three?
Good question. So I'll quickly just go back to this third slide, which was all the carriers. So the way the commercial marketplace works and all these carriers are in the commercial marketplace, different carriers will write different lines of business, right? So travelers is one of the few carriers that will do the whole program, right? The whole enchilada, they'll do the property, liability, workers' comp, everything. Trident, for example, they'll do the property and liability, but they won't do the workers' comp, right? XL will do just the educators legal and the employment practices for the Board of Ed, but nothing else, right? So our goal in this whole process was to go to as many carriers as possible and put together a siloed insurance program that best meets the town's needs from a coverage standpoint and is going to save you money. So that's really what we did. If, as far as your question on will travelers do, you know, will they give bids for one line, not the other, yeah? And you'll see that in the marketing summary, I think, is.
Will they give you a combined?
Page seven.
If we get, if you go with travelers for four.
Yep.
And they'll show you what the effect is on the property portion if you give them the whole enchilada, so to speak, or most of it.
Yes, they do negotiate with us on that basis. So if they're getting more lines of business, they definitely, I'll use the word discount, they reduce the rates without any question.
Same as us, as simple homeowners, if you get your car.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So I have two questions.
Sure.
The first one's on the cybersecurity insurance. Do they offer, you know, discounts or any kind of incentive if you actually have people that are proactively tightening down the network, you know, doing phishing, you know, going out and doing phishing tests, make sure that everything's on the latest and greatest protocols?
Sure.
Yes. It was, cyber was like a simple application at one time and, you know, they really didn't ask, it was, you know, name, rank and serial number, basically. Now they ask a lot of questions right down the road you're talking about. So the more protocols you have to prevent, then that's how they're doing their rating now. So if you're not participating at the highest level, you pay more than somebody that is, without any question.
Okay. So the other question that I have is just looking at it, like, it seems like there's different line items, some that are for educators, some that are more based towards the municipality itself. Have any of the towns that you guys have worked with looked into splitting and saying, here's a policy that covers all the municipal side of it and then here's a policy for these insurance purposes for the school district, to where they're kind of separate but equal entities?
Gotcha, I see what you're saying. So usually no, but what we do do for most of our clients, and they come to us and ask this, is, you know, the town will bill the Board of Ed for their portion of the insurance, right? And the way that's rated is, usually it's based on budget size. So if you're looking at the premium cost and you want to know, you know, how much of this should the Board of Ed be responsible for, how much should they be responsible for, we can give those numbers to you based off of how it was rated by the insurance carriers. If you're asking about, you know, can the town purchase a policy just for their general liability and auto liability and law enforcement and can the Board of Ed purchase a policy just for their general liability? We, I think of the seven-year municipal accounts that we service, one does that. But I would say that it's advantageous to purchase insurance together.
But you would actually offer the breakdown. And the reason why my question went in this direction was that the larger claims, as Matt alluded to, have been coming out of the.
The Board of Education. Sure, yeah, of course.
You know, and then it's a matter of, like, the whole town is, you know, paying the price for whatever liability was that was happening up there.
Yeah.
But if there is a way that through billing, we can break it down and say, you know, our premiums are X because of this, this, this and this. And these fall under the responsibility of the Board of Education, we may be able to do a bill back or something along those lines to help.
We can do an allocation for you, if that helps you.
Yeah, that would.
And we did that already with the cyber, but we can do those for all the lines of coverage.
Those are my questions.
He was only on slide five.
I only have one question.
Sure.
You talked about, Kevin's question about all the backups that you have for cybersecurity. So you already plugged in all those factors into your numbers now?
So this rating, or I'm sorry, the quote we were able to secure, we went to, I think, eight or nine different cyber carriers. What's going on right now in the cyber marketplace is most carriers are, well, first of all, you know, rates are going up left and right like we've never seen it before. Or, you know, we're constantly seeing 100, 150, 200% increases over.
Sounds like you're a builder.
Over renewal. A lot of cyber carriers, probably eight or nine out of 10 are now saying, you know, we need to see multi-factor authentication being used or we're not even going to offer terms, right? Whereas, you asked me that two years ago, one in 10 carriers need that as a prerequisite, right? So it's changing almost on a weekly basis. The quote we were able to secure for the purposes of this presentation was far and away better than any other carrier, than the coverage terms and pricing any other carrier put forth by a landslide. I think between the town and the Board of Ed, the premium is just under 10,000. Yeah. Right now, million dollars, a million dollars in coverage on average is going for $25,000 in premium, right? And that's just for a million dollars. Between the town and the Board of Ed, you're getting 2 million under our proposed program. So you're really not going to see a better deal than this as far as cyber goes. I think, looking forward and looking into next year, if, you know, you were to go with us and come on board, I think cybersecurity is one of the biggest issues that we'd want to tackle and tackle head-on. Multi-factor authentication, if it's not being talked about yet, I think it should be. And deploying that to all town and Board of Ed employees, I think, is honestly, you know, paramount right now because it's not only going to impact your insurance, but it's going to impact your cybersecurity, right?
So do you guys give like a benefit for, like, we have people that have company phones? Like, not company, I shouldn't say municipal phones. Like something like AirWatch or something that actually does mobile device security? I mean, is that one of the things that would come through your cybersecurity questionnaire? And the other one is, is I'm assuming that there's best practices that you guys are already aware of.
Sure, yeah.
So assume if we were to award the contract to you guys, then obviously a security questionnaire is going to come towards our IT department and say, are you doing this? Are you doing this? Are you doing this? And I'm assuming the quote's based off of assumptions. If it comes back and they're like, oh my God, I'm shooting holes through your network all over the place, is that going to change our quote and our premium?
No, so this, the quotes we're presenting are bindable quotes. They're not based on anything.
Right.
All right. So that, these are, again, these are bindable quotes that if you were to go with us, you can, we'd bind it up per these terms and that's that. Looking forward, I think that, and I come back to multi-factor authentication because I'm, we're literally dealing with every day, I think that fewer and fewer carriers are going to offer terms in the future, not right now, but in the future, if multi-factor authentication isn't in place. So I think that's something that should be looked into.
That would be the key for this year.
Yeah.
If you're not doing that, if you do that, that's going to help you. Any of the other things that you're doing, yes, they're going to end up on the questionnaire and they're helpful, but that's one of the key things right now because that's where the greatest protection is to prevent you from being.
I want to put on the record that I'm nodding along with the multi-factor, but grudgingly it doesn't come through with the nod.
It's actually, it is a great security.
Noted, yeah.
If you do. I understand the necessity, it doesn't make me like it.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know.
If you use MFA and then you have a single sign on top of it, you don't have a lot that you really have to worry about. You're going to go log in, you're going to get a text message, you're going to approve your text message and you're done.
Yeah.
Yeah, and most of the time, your text message system will put it up there for you so you don't have to go back and forth.
Right, right.
It's been simplified.
Yeah.
A great deal because of the possible hassle.
Even people that take with their toes can do it, Dave.
The nod is still grudging.
Okay, that's, anything else? We're only halfway done, so.
Oh, okay.
So this, the proposed program structure, again, I won't go through it line by line, but it's very similar to your current structure, right? Your, that travelers, I'm sorry, the property column all the way on the left, the blanket limit, the $5,000 deductible that's up from 2,500, so there's a difference there. All of the liability lines of coverage, general liability, auto, law enforcement, public officials, right? Those are all, you have that primary layer of insurance and then you have a, an excess layer over that, same as the current structure. I'm sorry, that should actually be five. And this, this excess layer here is actually, it's a 5 million per occurrence and 5 million aggregate excess layer, not four. So if you're looking at general liability, for example, you're getting $6 million of per occurrence coverage and $8 million of aggregate coverage. You have a $1,000 general liability deductible, I think it's currently zero, that goes from zero to 1,000, so a small difference there. And then the law enforcement and public officials, $10,000 deductible as opposed to, it's currently 7,500, so again, another small difference there. A pretty key difference between the programs has to do with the educators legal liability and employment practices liability coverage, right? So right now, that's included in the, in that layer there, right? So the educators legal employment practices liability, it's that last column, that last red column, under your current structure. And it sits under the umbrella, right? So it's shared, so the umbrella is shared amongst all of the lines of coverage that's set underneath it. Under the proposed program, that line of coverage is getting its own $5 million in limits, right? So if the Board of Ed had a, you know, call it a $4 million claim, you know, EPL claim, for example, and then the town had a, you know, a $5 million general liability claim, both would be covered because they're getting independent limits. The next piece is the cyber.
Can you just go back to that for a second?
Sure.
There's a subtlety here. So today, the educators would be an aggregate, educators legal liability, aggregate of three with five over the, three with four over the top.
Right, so you're getting aggregate of seven, correct? Yep.
So under your proposal, it's five.
Five, right.
But the town goes from sharing that 7 million with the schools to its own eight.
Correct.
That's your representation.
Yes.
So between the two, it's 13.
Exactly. And so, under your proposed, or I'm sorry, your expiring program, just for that, if you're looking at just that educators legal, yes, the $7 million aggregate limit is more than the $5 million aggregate limit under our proposed program. I think what's more important, though, is the 5 million, the $5 million per occurrence limit. So under your current structure, you'd have a $5 million per occurrence limit for that educators legal, but again, it's shared with the town, right? With our proposed structure, you're getting $5 million of per occurrence coverage, but it's independent and it's only pertains to the Board of Ed, right? And the reason I think per occurrence is more important than aggregate is because it's more likely that you'll have one big pop in a policy year than you're going to have, you know, four big claims that exhaust your aggregate limit. And that almost never happens, we almost never see that happen.
Welcome to Douglas.
On the same page, Saleem.
Yep.
Automobiles. What is your understanding of the comparison between the Maya's coverage and our coverage now, replacement value versus actual value?
So my understanding and, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the current coverage is replacement cost, is that right? Okay. Our proposed coverage with travelers is any vehicles that are 10 years old and younger, you're getting replacement cost coverage. Any vehicles that are older than 10 years, you're getting actual cash value. So it's replacement cost, it's minus depreciation, right? So that's a discrepancy on the auto coverage.
Actual cash value on a 10-year-old police car is going to be measured in pennies.
We might all.
I would never suggest that we cracked up a new cruiser, though. That's never happened.
In a perfect world, we wouldn't have a 10-year-old cruiser in our fleet.
Yeah. Yeah, there's no such thing, there really is no such thing. No, it's more about fire engines and, and their cost, and I'll ask David the same question when it's his chance, because I, I, there's gotta be a limit, right? So we're not gonna put replacement value on a 30-year-old ladder.
Right.
That would be nutty, so I just-
Right.
Get that on the record.
Yeah, but yeah, that's, that's, it's a great question, that's the way it's structured, just in, you know, in the name transparency. So your current, your current coverage is replacement cost for all vehicles, proposed would be replacement cost for vehicles that are 10 years or younger, and then actual cash value for vehicles that are 10 years and al, or older than 10 years. Yep? Or was I, oh, on this proposed structure. The, the cyber here, this green tower, honestly, I think it's, it's one of the, the biggest enhancements you'll see when comparing the two. So what we did is we went out and we secured independent quotes for each of the town and Board of Ed. So you're getting a million dollars of coverage for the town and a million dollars of coverage for the Board of Ed, right? So again, independent limit. So if you have an issue with one, it doesn't affect the other coverage. Also, the deductible for the, on the town side is 2,500, the deductible on the Board of Ed, Board of Ed side is 5,000. Currently, you're getting a million dollars of cyber coverage that's shared between the town and Board of Ed, and the deductible is $7,500. And then the, the workers' comp, statutory limits with Travelers, same sort of thing. And the police-fire accident policy, we quoted through VFS, statutory limits. The, and, and it's not here, but it's in the, it's in that packet that, that Matt sent out. The, we, we have a second option, which would be moving the workers' comp, just the workers' comp to mega, but the premium discrepancy was so marginal, I think it was a $2,000 overall difference, right? That our recommendation is to place the, the workers' comp with Travelers, so they have more, more premium volume, right? So that if you have a year in which some claims occur, they can offset those losses because they have more skin in the game.
Makes sense.
Right? So, okay. Slide six. This is your, your historical pricing, and this was put together based on information we obtained from the town. You know, we're not just coming up with these numbers, but if you go back to fiscal year 2010, and I believe these are your, these are your gross costs, you're looking at $220,000 in total cost for the entire program. Fast forward to expiring, you're looking at 390,000. That, that's, that's net gross, I think it's 424,000. And the renewal pricing is $476,000 gross. So if you're looking at it net, you know, maybe it comes down to, I don't know, 440, 450. But the reason I point this out is, is really the trend, right? So for the past 10 years, your costs have been going like this, and of course, some of that is due to an increased budget size. And in some years, it can be even due to the insurance marketplace, right? So right now, we're in the thick of a, of what's called a hard marketplace, so carriers are increasing their rates, they're pulling back on limits, they're trying to increase deductibles wherever they, they, they can get it. But prior to, I'd say, you know, about fall of 2019, going back to about 2011, we were in what's, what's known as a soft insurance marketplace. So there was a lot of capacity out there, carriers were eager to write business, and rates, on average, rates were flat, if not decreasing slightly. So this trend that, that the town has seen is abnormal to what the, the standard insurance marketplace, what we were seeing in the standard insurance marketplace. And again, of course, some of that is due to an increased budget and some of your claim history, but still a, almost a doubling of, of overall cost over that period of time is not what we were seeing with, with our commercial carriers and with the clients that, that we place business for, place insurance for, I'm sorry. Okay, slide seven. This slide, it really just, it lays out the, the pricing on both the, the expiring and the, the proposed option. So I won't go through the limits and deductibles because we went through that on the, on the structure, but I'll just bring your attention to the pricing. The expiring program with Maya slash Chubb, you're looking at $390,000 in net costs, so that's after dividends and a prompt payment discount, so that's net-net. With our proposed program, you're looking at $374,000 in costs. And there's no, there's no net or gross or anything, because it's, it just kinda is what it is, it's priced out. You know, I can't sit here and tell you that you're gonna get dividends or prompt payment discounts from Travelers, or XL, or these other carriers, because you're not, but, but this is, the way they price this is-
That's it.
That's it. And that's what you're guaranteed. So you're, you're transferring all of your risk to an insurance carrier, and that's what you're paying, that's it. So although, you know, obviously, I know that, that dividends and, and you've gotten dividends every year for the past five years, probably 10 years, but dividends aren't guaranteed, and, and they never can be guaranteed as, as long as, even if, if, you know, they've been, they've been given out for the past, you know, however many years. So that kinda is what it is. The next slide is just part two of the marketing summary, and that's just, again, just comparing the two, and here we're just looking at gross and net versus, versus our proposed program. So your gross costs for your expiring program, 421,000, which again, net was 390, but upfront we're 421 compared to our proposed program, which is 374,000. So gross savings, you're looking at about, at about $48,000. Net savings, you're looking at about $16,000. And again, just, you know, we, we like to point that out because I think it's important to point out gross savings, because that's what can be guaranteed, right? Last few slides, I, we kinda covered them, we went through the program structure and covered them, but I'll, I'll just go through them quickly. A couple of coverage enhancements with the Travelers property, you're getting a $250,000 limit within the property coverage for expensive movements, you rarely store property. Your current program offers a $10,000 limit for that, so let's say, you know, you got one of your locations floods and you have to move a bunch of stuff into storage for an extended period of time, you have $250,000 worth of coverage for that expense as opposed to 10,000. The Travelers program offers $5 million in flood and earthquake coverage for each flood and quake. As far as we could tell, the, the Maya program doesn't offer flood or earthquake coverage, and again, I will defer to, you know, to matter, whoever else to, to confirm that, but that's what we could deduce.
What coverage is kind of important?
Well, you're going through some of that, what happens to our vacant properties that
they're covered with Lloyds, I think?
Yep, so two, we could do two things. One, we got a quote for the Gleason Street property. I think your, your expiring premium for that property is around $4,500, maybe 5,000 for that property, for the $467,000 limit that, that it's insured for. We got a quote for about 5,200, so marginally higher, but the, the marketplace for vacant properties is kinda limited, but we do have that quote ready to go. Option two is if you decide to go with us, we could just take over your existing policy via broker of record letter. So either one. Slide 10 is going into liability. Again, we, we covered this, but we're looking at the, the per occurrence limit that you're getting, the coverage that you're getting with Travelers. You're getting $6 million per occurrence coverage, like, you know, per claim coverage for general liability, auto, law enforcement, public officials, employment practices, and then you're getting an independent $5 million of per occurrence coverage for the educators' legal and employment practices for the Board of Ed. Right now, those are all shared. And then lastly, the, the cyber. Again, independent million dollars limit and coverage, so essentially you're doubling your coverage, because you're getting a million bucks for each of the town and Board of Ed, lower deductibles for each. And the, the BCS policy, which is the carrier that, that we obtained a quote from, is offering a $250,000 limit for cyber deception. That limit is currently 100,000 under, under Maya, so that's if, you know, you get a, Gene gets an email from someone and says, you know, "Wire this contractor 500 grand."
Good luck with that. It's never happening with Gene.
Yeah. So that, that's what that covers for trigger, so. And I believe that's it, and then this is just our, you know, our ugly mucks.
One question, is there an option for extending the replacement costs in the vehicles passed in here?
I can, we can ask Travelers. I, I can't sit here and tell you that I can, you know, I can guarantee, but I'll certainly ask and, and then get back to you.
Probably expensive. Your question's cheap.
So.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's it, so I mean, I think, in summary, really, for what we're proposing, what we're offering, I think what we've been able to accomplish by going through this exercise, which I've thanked Matt a thousand times, but I know it was, some of it was cumbersome and getting all this information was, was kinda tedious, but I really think that regardless of if you decide to make a move or stay put, it's, it was advantageous to the town, because you, you're able to see what the, the commercial marketplace has to offer, we're able to deliver a program that, in our opinion, outperforms your current coverage and your current price by, if you're looking at proposed versus proposed, $100,000 in gross cost.
I think on the replacement vehicle part, if you're gonna look into that, I'd be willing to bet you that they've got like actuarial tables that are gonna tell you meaningful life on something. So that would probably be helpful to us, too, for fleet management.
Sure, yeah.
So, I don't know if it's new, but I think it's fairly rare, but our police department was recently, about a year, year and a half ago, accredited. Is there any recognition of that in this proposal?
No, no, there isn't. This is the first I'm hearing about it, but I don't think it would make a, a material difference in, in pricing, honestly, to Travelers, but-
It hasn't gotten really mainstream as of yet to, to where they'd offer that kind of incentive.
It's a national carrier, so it's, how tuned in are they to specifics?
Local stuff, right.
Accreditation.
It's a fair question.
Yeah, no, it is a good question, yeah, yeah.
My work here is done.
Yeah.
And last question, so we, the town of Douglas has not paid you at all for your services so far.
No, no, we've been working for free.
You're right.
We like that.
Yeah, no, I know, I know, I know, I know.
So.
No, no.
We can send you. Yeah, no, I, just trying to understand the game here a little bit, and, you know, I certainly-
And, and I totally kinda glossed over this, but on the marketing summary, you'll see our fee there, our, our brokerage fee is 45,000, so the way it's, and, and this was in the, in the proposal that Matt sent around, but the way we're, we're compensated, sure, we can be compensated on, on a commission basis, which is how most brokers are compensated, and, you know, the, our, the broker commission is kinda baked into the premium cost that you pay the insurance carriers, and then the insurance carriers, you know, send back X percentage of the brokers, right? We don't like doing things that way, we like to be totally transparent. We, we've been named for the past nine or 10 years now to, at the Sphere's most, most ethical companies list, and, and, you know, it's really not by accident, we are as transparent as it gets with our compensation with all of our clients. So as opposed to doing a, you know, compensation structure where it's just kinda baked into the premium, you don't know what we're making, and we just kinda, you know, gloss over it, we like to lay it out. So all of these premiums, we quoted net of commission, so none of them have commission baked into them. Instead, we work out a, a direct fee with each one of our, our clients. And the reason we do that is, A, I mean, A, it adds transparency to the whole process, but B, we really don't feel like a broker's compensation should be tied to how much you're paying the insurance carriers in premium.
You're working for us, not the carrier.
Exactly.
Correct.
Makes, it makes, it really doesn't make any difference to us, you know, what you're paying the carrier, we should be compensated based on the level of service we're providing you as our client, right? And in years where you're paying more in insurance, which you have every year for the past 10 years, on a compensation structure where it's baked into the premium costs-
You make more money.
We would make more money every single, that, that doesn't make sense to us, right? Why should we make more money in a, in a year when maybe you have some bad losses and you have to pay more, more in, in costs? Why should we make more money? We don't think we should, so.
And frankly, what we're doing is what we're doing.
Right.
It doesn't, that's, there's no relationship there.
Right.
A little bit sometimes, but it's not, it's negligible.
Yeah.
Plus, you know what your total cost for transferring your risk is, so if you wanna do the kinds of things you're talking about with allocations, too, you're getting the numbers purely for the risk grants for cost-
Right.
-of the insurance.
At the beginning, did I understand that? I said, did you reevaluate every three to four years on that cycle?
Unless you want us to do it more frequently.
Right.
Everybody would wanna pay less.
So, careful what you ask for. My question was gonna be, are you aware of the claim that we have in progress now in the building, and was that part of the pricing? Can you explain how your future pricing will work? So how many years of look back would this year's claim not show up in this premium quote, but then show up in a big way next year?
Sure, yeah. So, so, so the look back is usually five years, is what carriers, carriers wanna see is five-year loss runs. That said, if there's a, a big claim like, like the one that, that just happened, to answer your question, A, yes, the, the Travelers is aware of that, and their, their pricing, this pricing they offered is knowing that. B, a lot of, you know, big claim occurrence, like the ones that just occurred, a carrier like Travelers and, and most A-rated commercial carriers, they're, they're not gonna, you know, say, "Oh, you had this, this huge claim, so we're gonna increase your cost 50% next year." No, they, they look at the big picture, and if they see that a, a claim happened like the one that just happened, that is an anomaly, right? They treat it as such. Sure, it might impact your pricing marginally, but it's not gonna, it's not gonna make any material change to the way it would've been priced otherwise. Right. And all of the, this is the last thing, all of the carriers that, that we presented today, if you're looking at Travelers for the bulk of the program, XL for the, the Board of Ed stuff, BCS for cyber and VFS, all those carriers are A-plus rated carriers, those are the only carrier, we only, we only do business with A-minus rated carriers or better, right? So just professional standards of purposes, we can't place coverage with, with carriers that are low-rated carriers, so all of them are A-rated financially stable carriers.
Thanks for me.
Good presentation.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your information.
Thank you, thanks for having us.
He's thinking on it.
Is he?
He is.
You need those.
Yeah.
All right.
One come up. He gets a good shit.
Come on up.
In Rhode Island, witnesses have to stand, that's one of the best days of all trials in Rhode Island.
Is that what they do?
Stand up.
Good evening.
Auto deferendum to.
Good evening.
How's everyone doing?
Good, how are you?
Survived the weekend of rain?
All right.
Didn't stop, didn't stop. My name's David Labonte, I'm a senior account executive for the Maya program. I've been back with Maya now 15 years, and prior to that, I was with them for 10, so even though I may look younger than my hair is, I've been doing this for a little bit. So Douglas has been with the Maya program for a long, long time. So just wanna kinda jump into things, really, if you guys have questions for me. Maya does a strong emphasis on risk management support. We'll, we'll touch on, you know, some of the claims experience that you had. The big issue for you, Matt has mentioned it to you, and you're all well aware of it, is the property claims that you guys have had since fiscal 18 forward. The most recent development happened here, I talked to our property adjuster. Right now, best-case scenario on the oil loss here is about 475,000, it's all said and done. Worst-case scenario, maybe 650. The limit under the policy for this is 500,000, so, so we're doing whatever we can, but every time we keep digging a hole, we keep finding more black stuff. The limit under the policy for this is 500,000. So, so we're doing wherever we can, but every time we keep digging a hole, we keep finding more black stuff, liquid, and we really hope it stops. As I mentioned, in the packet that I just got finalized today, I think Matt sent it out, some of the information you received at your last meeting, talked about all the training that different department heads have gone through recently with the rewards program that we, we actively work with you to control the losses. In that rewards program, you've earned over $160,000, not counting this year. This year is roughly about 11 grand of some money there. You also take advantage of our grant program. As I, we sent you a summary of the, of the different grants that you guys received. That's about 63,000 that you guys have earned there. You'll see, if you turn, you know, to page two of my packet, the current deductible for the property is the $2,500. When Matt and I and Jean started talking about the budget, they were interested in looking at some higher retention. So in the back, there is some deductible options to, you know, to go on to higher limits. Couple of things that I would just take my, when I looked at the fleet schedule, we do cover replacement costs on things older than 10 years here. And there's some big ticket items that you have under this policy here, fire trucks, DPW. Cruises not so much, you know, they turn over probably every four to five years. But you have some pretty large fire apparatus, meaning just looking at one here quick, you have a 2005 Pierce. The time when you bought it was 497,000. So go out to replace that now is probably over a million bucks. So if that truck went out tonight, got into an accident, was deemed to be total, we pay you a million bucks to replace it back. And there's several other ones here, there on that end of it.
Can I just stop you there for a second?
Yep.
So that's no questions asked, so I have a hard time wrapping my head around this, understandably. Is that the quint, Lisa? The, the Pierce, was it 2005 Pierce?
Yeah, it's a ladder truck.
So that's the, it's a quint, so it's got a pump on it, which is usually why they fail, is they rot out. So if we were to crack that thing up tomorrow, we would get replacement value from you?
Yep. Yep. We just have, it just happened with a town nearby, ladder truck. The telephone pole, the pole fell just right on the truck. This mechanism couldn't be replaced, so we had to replace the entire truck, 1.2 million. Looking at the underlying limits here, you know, yeah, our deductible, excuse me, our umbrella is the $4 million. We do have standalone limits for each program, each carrier does things a little bit differently. We do have standalone professional liability limits. You have a 1 million per occurrence, a 3 million aggregate for the public officials, for your law enforcement, and for the school board liability. The $4 million umbrella sits over all those limits, so it bumps those all up by 4 million. Defense costs are outside the limits. A liability does not erode your limits with us. I'm going to go, quickly going to go back to the property claims. Since FY18 forward, we've paid just over 1.2 million in claims. That does not include the most recent loss to Town Hall. What we've done is we give you resources to help to try to improve the risk. And as Matt touched on to begin the meeting, a lot of the claims are coming from, or have come from the schools. Surprisingly, most of the schools have gone through major renovations too, you know, before that time. One of the things we did this year with Ed Dorgan, we have a, Maya has a dedicated risk management team, there's six of them across the state. Ed is, you know, we've put into the schools, every school has them, these, these sensors to help monitor temperature, water flow. So if, if and when things may drop or go down, Jeff will get notified of it so we can respond right away, you know, to mitigate that claim. Right now, in the program, we have over 380 municipal entities in the Maya program and it's across the entire state. There's about 99 buildings in the program. This year was the first year that we piloted that program and so far, it's been a huge success for us. Cyber is included, as I mentioned, it's in the state only limit of a million bucks. The deductibles, you want to take a look at how the deductibles are structured? Our deductible across the board is 7,500. Yes, there's different deductibles here under the professional liability. We can quote different things. Your claims really haven't been on the professional side since you've been with us. It's really been workers comp, but more so on the property piece. So we are looking to work with you, you know, again, the claims are the claims. We've met with Matt and some of the management team on a regular basis. Adam Furno has done a lot of training with us. He works closely with Ed on the risk management effort for the town and he's gone through some motion training with us, as you saw the, the entire piece there. You want to take a look to, when they mentioned the VFS program and statutory limits, you have certain limits right now. The statutory obligation on the 111F means that the municipality is obligated to make your firefighter or police officer whole. You want to see what sort of coverages they are providing there for you. It's not clearly, it's not clearly defined from what I saw. You have a medical limit under our policy of 500,000 per person every day throughout the years. There's no aggregate limit there. One of the things I saw Matt send over, there was a $10,000 aggregate deductible, meaning you have a 10,000, I'm assuming it applies to the medical coverage there, meaning you are on the hook for the first $10,000 for the policy period. We're not quoting that. You are then obligated under the law to make me whole, so you're going to take care of my medical and lost wages. You have medical, you have indemnity coverage here under the, under the Chubb policy of 1,500 per week. We can go up as high as 2,500. When someone is injured under our policy for, for the Chubb piece, the benefit period is a 10-year benefit period. So that means is either the claim goes on for 10 years or we exhaust the 500,000 limit. Whichever one comes first, that's when coverage stops.
It's hard to imagine an injury claim that goes on for 10 years with the employee still being employed by the town. Under 111F, my understanding is the town's obligation ceases to provide medical services at the end of employment. So if the person retires on a disability or retired because they have the time in to retire, at that point, the town's obligation to pay medicals, I think, ceases.
I think if I could give somebody an education, you're going to know the example I'm going to give. It's not a Massachusetts example, it's a Rhode Island example, but if you don't push the disability pension.
Right.
And that person stays on your payroll and you, your time limits expire, you will own that person.
You'll own them.
Forever. And that's my friend at the city of Osaka.
It's pretty hard to see a ten-year disability.
My neighbor.
Your neighbor.
No, no, the city of Osaka.
Oh, yeah.
No, if, if the town would have adopted Section 100B under the law, then you would be obligated to, even when I take on, when I go to the retirement system.
Right.
We, we have had seen claims though, where the medical limit is important. You know, the 10 years would come into play, but we have towns that have lower limits than 500,000.
500,000 doesn't go that far.
No, Matt, we're seeing more towns ask us to quote million dollar limits.
Especially now it's this.
Yeah, so.
Bad scans.
So, big thing I would, you know, point out, yes, obviously there's a prepayment difference. There are some deductible differences that we want to take a look at. The things that I would say that really would be, is the replacement cost something that you want to take, you know, a look at? Not saying that can't happen, but it is what it is. In the packet too, you saw that there was a dividend. As I said, I've been with Maya for 25 years. We've always paid the workers comp dividend. It's based upon your experience in the program. The participation credit, you'll see the, the history over the last five years. I can go back and give you the history historically to when we started to apply the participation credit. So all that in is around 50 something thousand dollars over the last five years that you guys received for that. There is a prepayment credit. It did go down from, last year was at 3, it's now at 2.5% for this upcoming renewal. That only applies to the Maya piece, does not apply to the Chubb program. I would, you would take, from what I saw here, there are some different underlying limits than any reference, like the public officials, what I saw, I had today was one and one, but the 5 million umbrella for them would sit there. So our limits are comparable under liability and under the professional piece. Again, the issue lies with what tools they bring to the table to help address your property claims. The professional liability, knock on wood, things are good both on the town side and on the school side of things with us. Workers comp is driven by claims. Right now, your claims are a little elevated, but overall, for, for town this size, it's one or two claims can affect your mod in a rap with us.
Ask questions, Chairman. How does workers comp work with you? Is it self-insured fund or are you, you collecting premiums and placing in a business?
Nope. Maya pools all the insurance together. So then outside of that, we go out and get reinsurance. So we are capping our liability. But it's, your experience stands on your own merit, but also has the pool. So the nature of this is costs are stable. You know, when you see what we pay out in claims, you know, the increases that you receive, the 10% last year and the 10% they're posing this year for that, Maya is never going to make whole with what they paid out on claims. But again, there's a commitment to work with the town. We gear the risk management effort, the grant program effort to address, you know, your loss is with us.
What's going on with reinsurance premiums on the workers comp? Are they going up or are they stable?
Right now, they're, as is, there are certain lines that are being impacted. You know, the gentleman touched on a little bit when, when they sat down. Property market is turned upside down right now just due to the types of claims that carriers are seeing across the country. Cyber liability is a very volatile line of coverage right now. Doesn't help when, you know, they hijacked, you know.
Pipeline.
That pipeline. We're seeing really tough things in the employment practices space, anything employment related. Everyone has these iPhones now. Someone touched on it, I think it was you, regarding the law enforcement piece, you know.
Right.
We are caution, monitoring that situation because what's going to happen when this council come July 1 starts to decertify a police officer for doing their job? So that's going to be, because no, it means you see what sort of, what the carriers want to do with putting in supplements to protect them. Because once you have someone on your department that is decertified and something does happen, that's going to be a tough position for any insurance carrier to stay behind. But I think there's more to follow with that, you know, we haven't seen anything come forward yet, but there's.
No, they haven't done anything yet.
But there's definitely some concern.
I would echo my question. Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yeah.
As far as qualified immunity, you know, the answer I got from the gentleman from Galviger was fine, but do you have any additional insight? I know it's going to lead to additional costs for us. Anything else you can add to that argument or that general?
I think the more training that your department can do, it puts us in a better position or any carrier in a better position for when the claim does come forward. It's just going to be, be a way for you to defend your position better. I think we're going to see more people bringing complaints forward.
Right.
That may have no merit at all. Your officers maybe just be doing their job and folks are going to test it to see what they can get, can push.
I agree. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more workers comp. No, that's all right. So we're self-insured workers comp. Can you describe any initiatives? I'm going to ask the same question of these guys because I forgot to ask, around cost containment within workers comp.
Under the IOD piece or?
No, the workers comp.
We do a lot of training, you know, typically Suzanne Kane, she would oversee the rewards program, usually with direction from Matt or, or Michael. So whatever you want to do in the area of training, things that we have done would be, you know, slip and fall training, back prevention. What we're seeing the last five to 10, eight years is a lot of school systems now are keeping their special needs students in-house. And we're not seeing a large severity in claim, but a high frequency of claims where these kids are lashing out, they're scratching, hitting, biting, pulling. So we, we provide some training through a company called QBS. Anything that we bring to the table in terms of training, it costs the town nothing. We pick up the cost and then in the event, we get, do the training, hopefully we'll be able to do things more in person sooner than later versus, you know, versus the virtual piece of it. We reward you through the rewards program, so you'll get the credit back on that.
So that's all prevention. How about claims analysis and trying to find places where you might be able to do cost containment?
Yep, when, that's when we did the risk analysis, again, this past year, February, we came out. We, we have, each year, we identify what we call watch, watch list communities that may have an adverse loss ratio depending on certain line of coverage. We break the program out into three lines. There's workers comp, there's professional liability, and the property liability. So our focus this year was to address the property, obviously, and also we, we put some things in for some workers comp related activities. Ed felt that the property is in, it's moving in the right direction with the sensor program, with the relationship he's developing with Adam and Jeff over at the school and all the training that they've done, even though it was virtual, you know, there was a lot that you guys accomplished this year.
I know Suzanne had worked really hard to grab as much Maya money as possible through training and what have you. Would you, if we were not to go with you guys again, would we be a less safe, less protected municipality?
Well, well, the training that you got from us is yours to keep, so, so, no. I mean, I, I would assume the travelers has a resource of risk management, you know, tools available to you. I don't know if you would reap the benefit of the credit and the grant program. So for instance, I don't, it was, the town each year has the ability to apply up to 10,000, to receive $10,000 to go get safety equipment, do some additional training. I know this year, Matt was able to get a grant independent of the Maya grant through the Department of Industrial Accidents, do some additional training. And I, I don't know if that was able to get, the training took place just because of the pandemic. But those training programs are across the state and we can bring things into the town of Douglas, so.
On the property, on the property coverage?
Yep.
Environmental broken out as a separate line item or is that just included?
It's a separate limit within the policy. So the question that Matt asked last week was, is it a 500,000 limit for the year? As Matt and I talked Friday, I said, no, it's not. So in theory, if you had multiple buildings have the same thing happen, the coverage would apply because there's some question right now if your delivery company may or may not have contributed to something happen. We are investigating that. I took that article, I sent it over to our, our legal team, so they're investigating the merit behind that. But, so the question is, it is a, it's not a, it's a per occurrence limit. It's not an aggregate limit.
I'm more, with more interest in the amount of it.
The, the 500,000, that's what it's capped at.
Yeah. Do you have an option, do you have an option to be higher than that?
We, right now, we do not.
No.
No.
But that's the maximum.
I mean, our goal.
Hopefully, we don't see another one, but.
You never know, things happen, you know.
If 330 gallons causes an awful lot of trouble.
Yes, it can. Yes, it can. Well, the. Well, DM is here, so when they say dig, we dig. So, and again, because I think it's to where it happened and the surrounding houses and the wells, they just wanna make sure everything is all right. Questions for me regarding the services, the history of the program?
Do you have to go on two?
I've been on the sports since 2010 and Maya's been, I'm fairly familiar with it.
No, I think it's a good exercise to go through, you know, to bring in other vendors to, or the carriers to kind of look at things. Maya's not opposed, you know, opposed to that, fully transparent information is there. Take it and look at it and ask questions. There is a lot to digest here, so happy to do more of a review. I know I got things a little late to Matt today, so I was just trying to get things finalized. But happy to jump in and, you know, do my observation as these gentlemen would, based on what we presided as well. Any other questions for me?
Biggest one I had, and I think you already answered it, you already answered it. Put them into place was training options for loss prevention.
Yep. Yeah. Each year, we look at the losses the program as a whole has had and we develop our training calendar based on the claims the entire book has had. Individual towns know they can come to us and say, hey, we need help in X. And we, if we can do it, we go out, because if Douglas needs it, there's other towns in the area that also probably need that training. You have a employee assistance program that's built into this as well, so.
That's invaluable.
Yep. That's not just for your employees, that's for any family member that lives within their house.
Dave, why don't we have the breakdown so I can see what's applicable to this town?
You're still here, Gene?
You still here?
For you, let me go back and see what, how fast I can push.
This is my January question.
You always, I know, you're patient with me, you're patient with me.
That was on Gene.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. So, right now, what we typically do in the mid-year point, we give Gene a year-end. When the fiscal year ends, we're able to reconcile by line of coverage, by department, how the premium gets allocated. So, in January, we gave Gene a media calculation of what FY '20 looked like by line of coverage. Most of your endorsement activity would have already happened in first, you know, six months of the year. But now she's looked, just to chew up anything that would be outstanding, so. I know, I could feel her eyes on me, so. I know that.
We all know that feeling.
That's true.
I think we should get, we, that's.
I should have noticed the smile on your face, I should have noticed, so.
Is there a line? Gene works for Douglas' discount.
There is, there is, yes, she does push me sometimes, yes, so.
And back to the chair's point, when we get that analysis, it does break it down between town and school because we pick up those costs in the end of the year important, it goes towards our next school spending. So, it's not useless information for me. We also have the water sewer broken down because the enterprise funds do pay their own premiums. But looking at the $1,000 number, you know, part of that will come over, come off because we do take advantage of the discount we paid up on July, so we make sure that we take advantage of that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, there's a lot here. I don't know if I can digest and make a decision tonight, I know that.
Oh, no, oh, no, I, no, no decisions.
I think this is gonna make our next meeting where we have some time to deliberate on it and I'm sure other questions will come up. At least as my thoughts, anybody disagree with that?
No, I would agree.
I second that.
Yep.
Very good.
And Hal's back.
Hal agrees.
Hal, do you agree?
Hal's in meeting.
Do I agree?
We're, we're not gonna try and make a decision on this tonight, we need to stew it over.
Two excellent proposals.
The one, he said, I miss with these guys here, do they offer training for a loss prevention as well?
I see heads nodding.
Yes, we, we have loss control engineers who also specialize in municipalities, school systems and so forth. We, you also get claims advocacy, so we will assign somebody to your account. So, when you have claims, their job is to make sure that they're moving through and also to advise you how to present them, because presenting them, best practices with presenting claims also has a lot to do with the outcome of them, reducing them, possibly preventing litigation, so forth and so on. So, what we typically do with a new account, would be a new account to us, is that we take your claims out again and we have our claims advocacy team as well as our loss control engineering team look at it and we look at what's the plan, what are the places where you're having the most problems? And we use our resources.
Get out of the way.
We use our resources in concert with travelers, so they do a lot of work in your area as well. So, we wanna combine forces and make sure that we're getting everything we can from travelers in terms of resources, like you were mentioning, as well as getting their advisement. We will set up claims reviews with you too. I think it's important to look at that through the year, because that helps us also to build what our renewal strategy is gonna be with the carriers. So, you were talking a little bit about reporting, so we do, we've invested a lot of money in data and analytical information that comes from that, so we don't wanna make it another job for you and anybody else that you have. So, kind of customize that so that we're giving you the flow that you feel makes, makes the most sense for you to make decisions. And that, you know, it also gives you some vision to the next budget. What is your claims trend like? And we'll be sharing with you what's going on in the marketplace and try and combine that so that we can give you some predictability about what the future looks like. You asked about marketing, again, in between the three or four-year period that we were highlighting. If it makes sense, we'll, and through our communication with you, we'll go to the market more frequently if it makes sense. Want to be careful, sometimes it's not a good idea, some people.
Matt, talk real quick, be, be careful what you ask for.
You know, sometimes when you're out in the market every year, you're hitting these carriers and then they don't see anything coming. So, they're looking for legitimate opportunities as well. So, we kind of, you know, wanna work with you on that, that part of the strategy. We also give all of our clients and we can customize it with you, a loss control portal. So, it's not, I'm not trying to push self-service on you guys, but we do give you 10 modules, they're training modules, and you can put those out into your departments if you feel it fits for you. Not every organization feels that it fits, but there's training that's available online that people can do kind of with their own pace, if you will. And we also use those, we connect those to whatever the loss control plan is. So, we've got boots on the ground working and we've also got the backup of these portals. In there also, there's HR material that's available, so if you have to do harassment training or any of that kind of stuff, it's in there. This portal, it probably would cost you thousands of dollars every year to get yourself. It's also set up so that you can track who's doing it and who isn't. So, if you've got some problem folks that were trying to get on the right path, you can watch and see if they're following through on the training. So, got a combination of carrier, us with boots on the ground, claims analytics and reporting as well as the loss control portal. And if we see something else and there's an opportunity to bring other stuff to you, we'll, we'll talk about those resources. That answer your question?
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna take it, bring it up in the next meeting?
Yeah. Anybody have any additional questions of either one of the two?
That's enough insurance.
Yeah. All right, so we'll have this on the next regular meeting agenda. And thank you guys all for coming in, much appreciated.
Lot of work, thank you, all of you.
Pleasure meeting you all.
Thank you both for excellent presentation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, so this brings us to approved annual appointments and possible votes, which there are no yellows in the packet according to the memo attached to it and I think it looks like we're losing John Furno off of capital improvement.
I have a note on here under the central mass regional planning reference. Next September, they crossed out that EOT lifetime number.
Oh, did they?
Well, on the line anyway.
I think we're mandated to go by that.
Well, yeah, yeah, look at that. Well, given the hour, I'm not gonna fight with you people today. I was invited to CMRPC annual dinner and something and I wanted to know if one of you guys wanted to be my plus one. Dave?
Can you bring home a baggie for me?
Probably do.
Whatever night that is, I'm busy.
You're busy, all right.
I'm not holding Douglas' shirts in Worcester.
Right.
I actually went to one and it's actually very nice.
Yeah. You've been to one more than me.
Are we moving these right now?
We can, we can revisit them. Like I said, the only thing that I see that's missing is on the capital improvement committee, John Furno has asked not to be reappointed.
Has all the boards and committees been contacted to get their input?
I believe so.
Should be listed in there.
They're all good with that.
Is that what you were asking?
All?
Well, pretty much.
All that responded anyway, so maybe it probably didn't.
Oh.
Yeah.
Were you not contacted, Mike?
What is blue?
Oh, no, I wasn't contacted, because I'm not a chair of that particular board. On capital, I wasn't. So, that's what raised the question. And I know we haven't discussed anything on VVA or on building facilities.
Why don't we table this until next week?
Yeah. I don't have any issues with that.
Insurance used a brain cells up.
Yeah.
Say the insurance used that brain cells up pretty much to.
My brain is full. All right, so we're gonna table this until next week. Approved job descriptions and possible votes for part-time office assistant for Board of Health, principal clerk, community development, and administrative assistant for the assessor's office.
So, Mr. Chairman, by way of explanation, before we get into the job descriptions, what? Town meeting approved a budget that included a part-time position at the Board of Health, so it's already in the budget and it's to assist with the day-to-day. So, stickers for the landfill, for the transfer station, I'm sorry, and the day-to-day office work, because the current supervisor in the office is not, you know, not a 40-hour person. It's less than, well, less than our typical full-time employee, so. After doing a needs assessment, talking to the finance director about it, members of the Board of Health, this was the recommendation, so that's what we went to town meeting with and it was approved as part of the budget. It is my intention to post that position internally because it is my understanding that we have existing, at least one, maybe more than one existing employee who is at a point in their career where they'd like to transition from full-time to part-time. It's a huge advantage to have an existing employee take the position because they will know the process for turnovers and working with Gene's office and keeping track and following fiscal controls that we already have in place and have a personality gel with the other staff in the office that are there. So, this is allowed under our personnel policies and procedures and our personnel bylaw that I can post internally if I know there are candidates who are qualified. So, this would actually be, you know, potentially full-time employees looking for a part-time position in the same or lesser pay rate of grade, so. One of those people who's looking to transition, retire, is working in the assessor's office now as the clerk. And thus, I wanted to revisit that job description because if she does in fact make the transition over, that position would be vacant in the same year that the principal assessor has already announced that she is gonna retire this winter. So, I wanna make sure that I get a new person in there that can be trained while the principal assessor is here, before a new assessor begins work, so that they're familiar with Douglas and all the procedures in that office and coordinating with the building department. So, there's definitely a transition plan in place here and in terms of the town's overall budget structure, the budget was based upon the assessor's administrative assistant, who was a top, I believe she was a top step, top step.
She's up there.
Close to top step. We'd likely replace that person with someone in a lower step, so there would be some budget drawdown from that. With respect to community development, this is probably my highest priority. I've been out to advertise for a director in this department and have gotten no applications, which is a fate not unlike that of neighboring towns that have done the same thing. At the moment, I'd like to try a different format and I've tested the idea with stakeholders and have support from, you know, the boards and commissions that are serviced here, that what we need is somebody to make the trains run on time. Somebody who has a tremendous appetite for process redesign and working with e-permitting and collaborative workspaces in the computing world and the way we've set up here with Office 365. To make sure that we hit all of our deadlines, that planning boards, zoning board of appeals and conservation commission members all have the information they need in their packet well in advance of their meeting, that applications are reviewed for completeness and are not put on the agenda unless they are complete and that communication amongst all these departments is facilitated at the highest level. One of my diagnoses looking at the department is that communication hasn't been ideal. There are places where we can improve and I'm looking for that person who can pull it all together, to be the glue for all of our land use functions. And right now, just for clarity's sake, this position is in the compensation table as the administrative, administrative secretary in community development. The word secretary is frowned upon, modern human resources management. When town meeting comes along, I will ask for a title change, not necessarily a grade change, but a title change, principal clerk, to match the principal clerk position in the building department, so they'd be peers. So, that's why you see the verbiage change a little bit. I would really like to post that position as soon as this board approves the job description, post it as soon as possible for the minimum amount of time and attract some of the candidates we had for another recent opening in town that were not successful getting it as the beginning of the pool for that. There's no need to, to post for much more than 10 business days to get this done, or even 10 calendar days. The personnel bylaw and policies and procedures are 10 days, so that's what I want to do. So, that's the history, that's how it all comes here and how would we fund it? Well, the budget for next year calls for a full-time director who was at top grade and top step. So, it was an M5 step 10 that Mr. Kundif was in the budget for. I'd be using some of that compensation. And then I would like to go to town meeting in the fall and ask for some of that money to be moved down from personnel compensation down to the expense line. So, we have an engineering firm of record, which we would put out for competitive proposals to see who's, can be on-call for us and do the inspections and some of the highly technical reviews that need to be done. The sum total of those two things, it's really more about servicing the town and its board members than it is about absolute dollars and cents, because you're always gonna end up pretty close to the same position in dollars and cents. So, that's what I'd like to do. In terms of rewriting the job descriptions, I didn't do a whole lot extra, right? So, the Board of Health is new, that came from Kristen Harris, she did a lot of work and I edited it. The other two are really just. The other two are really just been updated for the specific requirements that I had in mind. Under the Town Administrator Act, I can do these pretty much on my own. But as you know, I've always brought job descriptions to the Board of Selectmen because I think there's a residual policymaking power that supersedes the act in the sense of, do we agree? Do we ratify this organization of the staff and the town administrators organizing of it? So that's why I bring these to you for your approval. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good work for me, as presented.
Yeah.
I don't have any issues with any of that. No, the sooner the better.
Right. You want to make a motion?
So I move that we accept these job descriptions as published.
Second? Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're finally to the approved minutes and possible votes.
Lisa, did you do these minutes? You did?
Did you put in at least three traditional typos or? No?
She's not even here to...
Oh, she's not prepared. Put the typos, kid, brutal.
I'd like you to start off by making the page numbers wrong.
And the agenda item number is wrong as well.
Also, if you could leave selected items out of my book, that would be helpful.
He's going to kill you.
You retire, you stick around, you're going to get a little bit of abuse. Oh, I'm good.
Tell myself it had to be said.
It's all your fault.
What is it?
True.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Just a teeny, teeny bit, and it's not a criticism, but is there any way you could put the timestamp on future minutes?
Oh, sure.
Just, it didn't have to be super accurate, but it does give a, the potential viewer a ballpark as to where to start.
Could you call them?
It's a fair concern.
Yep.
Very astute, Mr. Barnes, for picking that up, I think.
Clearly runs in the family of the name.
Yeah.
It's all that time planning.
Right, yes, regionally, yes.
But I think this selectman consistently asks for this.
Yeah, this was my, this is if I do nothing, it's this. No, it's a...
Super helpful when you're looking for, like, tonight's meeting is already two hours, so...
It is. It went by so quickly with all that insurance stock.
There's no rush to go home. It's the Astros, they're going to kill...
And the Nets are going to kill us.
All right. Is there any additional discussion?
No.
Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You want to make a motion on the executive session minutes, or should I just do it?
No.
Do it, just do it.
I was thinking you should do it.
All right, then. I'll make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes and retain them.
I would second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Your report, Mr. Administrator.
I know my audience, so I'm going to jump around for a couple of seconds. First of all, we always post executive session because there may be updates in these critical areas because there's a lot of activity. There's nothing so pressing tonight that needs to be done. So at the appropriate time, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that you skip executive session and not do it tonight. Then I'm going to skip eight and just go to nine and just keep the floor, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
All of you?
We, we've put in all this work, and I say "we," but I mean Bob and Eric has put in a tremendous amount of work, along with April Anderson slash Lamro, in preparing the town's Mass Works grants applications. And we're almost, almost at the point of hitting the submit button. And there are some, there are a lot of things. It's a massive application. I've taken the opportunity to read through many portions of it. It's professionally presented. It's a compelling case. And really, I think, when I compare it to the level of preparation and detail provided by other communities near us that have been successful with Mass Works, I think we beat them. I just think our current proposal is much stronger than, I won't name names, but, you know, I remember calling to another town hall, I won't be specific which one, and finding that my peer had absolutely no idea what they had applied for, what they got, how it was going to be administered. And, you know, I'm not in that position. I mean, I don't know as much as Bob does, but I certainly have command of a lot of it. And so there's been a tremendous amount of work put in. I don't feel comfortable putting a letter, a final letter of support for one specific item without authorization of the Board of Selectmen. There is engineering work that has to be completed in order to make our proposal viable. So it has to be at the 100% design level before we submit or within a reasonable timeframe after we submit. And that includes the identification of any funding source needed to make good on the town's match, so for the engineering piece. And just today, at quarter of six, I think it was, we got guidance from the state on how to apply for the American Rescue Plan funds, so-called ARPA funds, which of course the state has renamed to a completely unpronounceable acronym. Let's call it the FRF, right? So those funds have been made available to the municipalities, and we have to apply for them. And eligibility determinations will be made at the municipal level, not the state. So we are interacting directly with the United States Treasury on the use of these funds. And one of the uses that is allowed is water and sewer projects. Pretty much carte blanche. There's not a reference back to the pandemic. There's not a reference back. I'm just going to check specifically on how much of the engineering cost of a project can be done versus laying pipes. But we are at this point now where we have to come up with our match, and I just want to put this in ballpark figures. The private entities that are looking to develop in this area, in the development area in question in the Mass Works grant is $4.1 million from the private?
Yes, the riposte.
And we're looking to come up with about $300,000 from the town side. I would like to have your authorization. I'm going to try to phrase them, you know, something close to a motion for you so it's easier, but to authorize a town administrator to commit to the Mass Works process, to the One Stop for Growth Grant process, up an amount not to exceed $307,500 for purposes of funding the town's share of an engineering project to bring this across the finish line. When those funds are available, you'll actually have the vote as the Board of Selectmen to release those funds. I just need to be able to attach a letter to Bob's application to make sure that the people reviewing this know that that's our intention, that we're committed.
And we will not have to spend those funds if we don't get the grant, is that right?
To some extent, correct, yes. So some of the engineering that's in progress, we're just going to have to pay for because it's so far down the road.
We've got that covered.
Some of it's been covered by the Water Commissioners. Some of it we need to cover. But there'll also be a chunk of it that's contingent on approval of the grant application. Wouldn't be spent if we're not successful, okay?
And this would come from free cash?
No. So it's federal funds, the American...
The American...
$307,000.
$307,000 would come from the $2.7 that we have coming to us from President Biden's American Rescue Plan.
So it's federal money?
It's federal money.
Yeah.
All right.
Because my index question was, if it was coming out of free cash, we'd have to go to town meeting.
You have to go to town meeting. That is basically Plan B, right? I'm 90% sure, and I have a question into Bob Sullivan, the superintendent of Water and Sewer, to be, because it's a statutory reference. The Clean Water Drinking Act eligible projects are eligible for ARPA. I just want to be sure with him what it is that we can match. But I just, it's a historic opportunity. I think at this point, I'd be remiss if we didn't let Bob just kind of, would you just go over the, well, actually, can we do the vote? And then my report would be deferring to Bob to just the details of the grant application.
So moved.
Second.
Well, you made the motion when you...
Well, I said...
Basically, I mean, are we already just with the "so moved," or do you want it on the record better, or how do you want?
I'm not a member, so you can't just "so move" what I say. Can you just move as the town administrator phrased it?
How about?
Move to authorize...
$307,000?
The town administrator to...
Commit.
Commit $307,500 for the purpose of engineering, the grant process.
I would second that. Nice job, Mike. Motion's been made and seconded.
I was winking.
Any further discussion?
Just grandkids, be prepared to pay for it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At the federal level, yeah. Is the money coming from the feds duplicate from what we're applying to the state? Is there some backup in case we don't get it all from the state?
No, they're really not this, they're not completely different. There's overlap, but not very much, you know? So the federal program is a stimulus package tied to pandemic recovery. So there are things in there that were eligible, like if we gave extra pay to public safety people who worked extra hours, if we were going to make water, sewer, broadband, infrastructure improvements, as we've mentioned, we will. And there's other eligible expenses that are all tied to COVID. There's, you can do a targeted business grant program if you can write one that passes muster, right? It's really hard to do, as you know, selectmen, to sort between your local small businesses. You'd be better off just giving them all a flat check than trying to sort it out. But long story short, that's what that is. Mass Works, and specifically what we're applying for, is infrastructure development, so water, sewer, natural gas, to support the buildings that people are proposing to be built. We can use our federal funds as a match under the state's requirements, and it improves our scoring as an applicant. But it's not, it's not an offset.
And there's also additional funds potentially under the infrastructure bill, whatever that...
I think really, to be fair, there's crazy money out there right now between the Department of Commerce, EDA, and the state. I'm sure is going to get a chunk of money for its own purposes, which it may put into One Stop for Growth, but I'm not sure that they will. But it's a two-year program, so we will...
A once-in-a-lifetime op.
A once-in-a-lifetime...
Stuff for the town.
It really is.
Taking advantage of all these.
That's a nice entree to, if you indulge us, Mr. Chairman, that Bob can summarize what he's about to do, if he can stay awake because he hasn't slept much.
It's been a Mass Works marathon weekend, like you said.
In 500 words or less.
Yeah, 500 words or less.
I promise I'll have you out of here by midnight. I promise.
Oh, we'll be out of here by midnight. You'll be safe.
Camera's rolling.
I was last night. As you know, Mass Works grants, a prerequisite is to be shovel-ready. And what Matt was trying to explain with the engineering, you have to be 75% to meet that threshold for, to be shovel-ready. And we've met that right now. And to get from the 75 to the 100%, which we have to do within a very short time while they're reviewing our application, that's where this money for engineering is coming from. Right now, we've appropriated $99,700. Article five on the last special town meeting was 53,2, I think it was. And then the Water Sewer Commissioners appropriated 46,3, which came up, adds up to the 99,7. Now we need to push it further, design the sewer pump station, and get that thing to the 100% level. So come September, hopefully, we're looking at some sizable grants. We have two applications in the pipeline, one big one, one small one. The application 120, I'll refer to as Application 120, is the water, sewer, natural gas infrastructure upgrade. Right now, we're looking at North Street, 1,300 feet of pipe going from 8-inch to 16. Gilboa, 2,800 feet from, I believe that's 6-inch now going to 12. And then Northeast Main Street, 2,600 feet going from 8-inch to 12-inch. This will create a pressure loop for our CIG 1.1 million square foot warehouse. In addition, we're extending water lines to Blackstone Valley Logistics Center and a return sewer line. Those total infrastructure items, including million paving, a year later is coming up to $12.8 million. We have commitments from CIG and Skanel for about $4 million, just round numbers. Eversource is contributing $250,000 as a contribution. I expected them to contribute more, but that's what they did for Sutton when Sutton got that $2.5 million grant. So they're just following that pattern. So right now, we're putting in for an application of about $8.8 million, which is a sizable grant. That's about it on that one in a nutshell. The second application is for Davis Street, Monroe Street. We're finally trying to get ahead of the game. There's two schools of thoughts here. One is build it, and they will come. The other one is build it when we have a project. I'm with the former one. The town unfortunately has a theory of using the latter one. I think right now, Application 120 with all the upgrades, we have a development-driving infrastructure. And it is cumbersome, and it's just playing catch-up, catch-up, and it's, it's not the proper way to do things. With the Monroe-Davis Street, there is no development, so infrastructure will drive development, which is the way you should go because now we can apply to Mass Works grant for engineering. So instead of us coming up with $400,000 for engineering, the engineering for Davis Street and Monroe Water Sewer Upgrades is $349,000. Part of that 400, that Matt, or that $307,500 that Matt asked for, $35,000 of that is going towards that application, which I call, refer to as 470, number 470. I think that's a pretty good rate of return. We'll get $315,000 grant, and we match it with $35,000. But that's the way to go. The thing with Mass Works is, once you spend it, they don't reimburse you for engineering. So Davis Street did not happen yet, so we can get reimbursed $315,000 and put down 35. With Gilboa, North Street, Northeast Main, we've already spent it. And there's, well, let's say we will have spent it because there's two types of funds. There's actual, which is the 99,7, and then there's the anticipated, which is the 305, 307, 500. Whether it's actual, anticipated, it will be actual by September when the actual bid time is awarded. And we will not be reimbursed with that. So we call that now a match, so that we're in now with CIG and Skanel as far as matching funds. So it looks like the Monroe-Davis Street is the way to go, and we've got other projects in the pipeline. You're looking at North Street, the pine, sand, and stone, probably three to five years. That'll be a huge project. What's nice about this 120 project is the Gilboa Water Main will become the southern leg of a northern loop. The Davis Street or the Northeast Main Street water line will become the northern leg of a southern loop. So we're actually building within three to five years, two major loops for Bob Sullivan. And this project we're doing right now is common legs to those two projects. The thing I'm finding out, we had a biotech firm call me about three months ago for 40 acres off Monroe Street, and their first question was, what do you have for water in the area? And I said, well, it ends at the school, we can bring it up. The next question is, what do you have for sewer? Well, that was a tougher question because the sewer ends longer, so it's a longer run for sewer. The third question was, what do you have for natural gas? I didn't know the questions were getting tougher as they asked. So we have no natural gas. The thing with Project 120 is we're driving gas down. 12,450 feet of line, gas, gas line coming down, and it will end at Main Street, North Street intersection. That's part of the proposed $12.8 million project. So I think my theory... So, I think, my theory is, build it, and they will come. So, it's nice to, it's kind of refreshing with Project 470, because now we're on the front end, and we'll look forward to development for next year.
You're in a much stronger position as a community to pick who you bring in, when you look ahead far enough to know, well, a quote-unquote corporate park or light industrial park would look like such-and-such, and would be serviced by utilities, so it would be quote-unquote pad-ready. And at that point, that's the coin of the realm. You can walk into almost any corporate boardroom for a capital committee meeting and have a, and be taken seriously if you have a pad-ready site. Theoretical sites are, you know, unless they really have some burning desire to be in a specific location, they'll always find a better one.
And mass economic development, which is a private quasi-public, has a list of pad-ready sites around the state, and...
Yes, they do.
... recruiting body to bring businesses in from out of state, so this would tie in with that very nicely, too.
You just look at those lists, what else with Comcast?
Yeah.
We need to open up a half a million square foot warehouse, okay?
I mean, we have 40 acres off Monroe Street, but there's no water, sewer, natural gas. I mean, yes, it's pad-ready, but it's really cannot support a sizable project.
Well, to a Fortune 5, that's not pad-ready.
Yeah, pad-ready is stubs coming out of the ground, here you go, what you building?
From a construction standpoint, Davis Street, Monroe Street, it's all gravity feed, so it's probably the least expensive of options in the...
Well, Gilboa, we're building a $800,000 new pump station.
You won't need it for Davis Street as well, I'm saying. Where the old one is, Bob, or...
Oh, for Davis Street, yes, that will be all gravity feed. Gilboa, the new pump station is replacing the old pump station.
Replacing Gilboa.
The one that's half leaning over?
The one that doesn't pump anymore? Yeah, that one.
Just come in with a fork left and take the old one out.
It's got a pumping station with like a little wink emoji on it.
But to answer your question, Mike, yes, gravity feed, we've ran the gravity feed up to the point where the pipeline crosses 16, they can get that back to the schools.
Okay.
So, we're looking at a very small pump station in the future, close to the pipeline.
Yeah.
The water line will go all the way to Oxbridge, the Oxbridge Town Line. Now, had that been in place, we'd be supplying water to Oxbridge right now, because Campanelli Park does not have sufficient water pressure or volume to support another building. The town of Oxbridge has found that out. The project going up on Serendipity was in trouble for a while.
Really?
Had we had water to that point, we'd be servicing that end of Oxbridge.
Timeframe-wise for the grant?
The...
When they get...
Hopefully, we hit the submit button tomorrow, and awards will be announced in September.
Good means September.
I have to say, April Anderson has done an excellent job with consulting. We've re-edited this thing probably a dozen times. What you're looking at now is not what it looked like two months ago. It was just rewritten, and rewritten, and rewritten. I think we have a very strong application, she thinks the sweet spot is $2 million, this is sitting at 8.8, but you have to think, this is for three infrastructures, water, sewer, gas, and three towns. Sutton and Oxbridge did not step up to the plate on this one.
Do at least we have a letter of support from them saying that the...
Yes, we have letters of support from them, we have letters of support from Jeanie Hipert...
Did you stop using whiteout on your computer screen, Bob?
I get the tape now, the tape's a lot easier. You don't have to let it dry.
They're at 9:30 at night, trying to bring us good news. What is it, yeah?
I'm an equal opportunity hitter.
That was one of the questions.
Anything else, Bob? Good triumvirate, we got Matt, Bob, and April Anderson, so that's...
Do you have any questions?
I'm really enthused, we're moving forward here on a number of things.
Well, we, we...
A few years ago, when we came in and sat at this table twice a month and heard lots of bad news, we now commit and we get lots of good news. And I mean, not only economic involvement, a great idea to bring two competing insurers in here and let them battle it out, I mean, that's wonderful.
Your hard work is noticed and appreciated, Bob.
We finally have people actually calling us and looking for sites, developers.
Because the word got out that you're hiding their bushes until they return your call.
They wake up, I'll be at their bedside.
Thank you for really hard work and good work.
Thank you.
You're definitely...
It's been fun, it's been a fun run. Flying was easier.
All right, Mr. Chairman, are we ready to entertain a motion to adjourn?
Who wants to throw it out there?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Yeah.